Our main board meeting. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call vote please.
Ryan Giezi.
Present.
Bill Houston.
Present.
Brian Mahan.
Present.
Kariszewski, present.
Cody Buzowski.
Present.
Okay, for those who can withstand, would you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a virtue card reading today, Mr. Houston.
Yes, today's card is on commitment. Commitment is caring deeply about something or someone. It is deciding carefully what you want to do, then giving it 100 percent, holding nothing back. You give your all to a friendship, a task, or something you believe in. You finish what you start. You keep your promises. You're practicing commitment when you think before you make a promise. When you keep every agreement you make, when you make decisions confidently, when you go the extra mile, when you give 100 percent to everything you do, and when you are faithful to people you care about. The affirmation, "I commit to my decisions, I keep my agreements, I give my all, I am a faithful friend." Commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. The Board of Education has developed guidelines for our conduct. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively, collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Okay, we're at the portion of reading tonight for public comments. Okay, for public comments, do you have a specific place where you'd like them to stand?
Preferably in the wall.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind just standing, I think we're looking at this camera right over here. Okay, so you can kind of look at us, but that camera's got you. Thank you very much. And if you could, please, just start with introductions, your name.
I'm Leena Shane.
And I'm Christian Housework.
And we're here to talk about weighted GPA with you guys and the importance we think it plays for all in AP and honor level classes.
So, we've actually gone around and asked students of Kus High School what they thought about weighted GPA and if they thought that it was beneficial. And our survey showed that nine out of 10 students showed or thought that it was beneficial to them in some way, or others that they know who take honors classes. With the system that we have currently, it doesn't promote as much achievement, I suppose you could say. And those who are on the fence about taking a higher level class, a college level class, find it a lot more daring to risk their GPA to be put in the same level as those who would take easier classes. And as a result, will take the easier class to get the easier A so they can protect their GPA so they can get more scholarships. Now, if we implemented a weighted GPA system, this would show more of those who are overachieving and taking that leap into college level courses. With our system that we have, one of the students was actually taking very many AP courses, but he knew that, once he got a B, that it was going to be all over because his class rank is messed up and he's, now there's people who took, you know, something that was... He took a lot of AP math classes. So, anyone who took any math classes below him and they happened to get all As, if he got a B, then he would be put below in class rank. And if we had a weighted system, that would allow us to look better at the achievements which he has and the hard work that he's put in to pass these college level courses with almost flying colors.
Thank you very much for your comments. And I want to let you know that we're limited to what we as a board can respond to during the public comment area. But, you know, bringing this to light and with the documentation that you have or with, you know, your information you presented, if you have that in a written or submitted form...
I do.
That would be, if you could provide that to the board, this is something that will be, you know, taken under consideration and possibly would be an agenda item at some point in the near future. But, I really want to thank you for expressing, you know, your public comments. And really, I think, I understand where you're coming from and I, you know, I'm looking forward to that documentation and we'll just see what, see what kind of things can happen. But, thank you for taking the time and having the courage to stand up during this public comment period and speak. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I almost want to give you a round of applause.
And I know Mr. Johnson's been working with him. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Thank you again. Anybody else during the public comment period? Thank you. I want to, again, welcome all of you here tonight. We have a lot of business to cover, but I'm really looking forward to it all. The first thing, maybe not looking forward to, but showcasing schools of student learning are three. First off is EMS Student Council.
Welcome. Welcome, yes.
Thank you for being here.
So, today we have three of our seventh grade representatives. We have Alina, Ellie, and Ellen. They're here to share with you some of our accomplishments through Student Council.
Okay, so, we went to JAM recently. It was not even a month ago. Not a month ago even. It was a lot of fun. We got to build a lot of friendships with other students from around the state of Wisconsin. We met a lot of new, like, advisors. I talked to some of the advisors and they told us what they were doing with their student councils and stuff. And we kind of talked about that for ideas next year. It was in Green Bay this year. Last year it was not. It was in Madison. They were even talking with us about how they were trying to move it to campuses so it would be like easier on them and stuff, which I thought was really cool. And it was just a really neat idea, I don't know. So, we made these things. Well, this is our banner, and we also had a button, but... Did we get the button? It's in the holder? Okay. And a tri-fold, and we placed silver on all those because there was just something mixed up with like the thing and what we were talking about. Because like, the theme was like mixed up, didn't explain that well to us, and there was just a... Like, it was supposed to be like constructions of...
Wild about leadership.
Yeah. It ended up being construction. It was construction, but then they didn't clarify that with us. Like, it just said wild about leadership, so we wanted the wild theme, but they didn't like do anything about that. It was just, we got the same amount we would have gotten if we did the same thing. I don't know.
You were unique.
Yeah. We weren't the only school.
The only school.
They're downplaying their accomplishments. They didn't get gold, they got silver.
And we did super sectionals, as they call them. They had like a big thing about it, and it was just really fun. You got to break out. You, we each got a partner for it. You go to like different things, you do different things to work on like your leadership skills.
Icebreakers.
Icebreakers, yeah. It's nice to meet people. A lot of fun things, and then you go into like this keynote speaker with your like reading and stuff. And it was so much fun. We had T Street this year, and she was like so funny, but she like made a really big impact on a lot of us. Like, she talked about a lot of things that we never would have considered thinking about, really. If you haven't heard of the amazing T Street, you should definitely look her up. She's definitely worth looking up. She's amazing. I wish she'd come to our school and speak, but I...
The amazing teacher.
Yeah.
The amazing T Street. T E I. T E I. Maybe Street. That was her name. All 26 of our Student Council Representatives went to JAM this year, too, so we're pretty happy about that.
That's our school spirit assembly. So, we made our tri-fold office of the school assembly. It was about cooperation and bullying. We talked about, um, Mr. Rogers. It was kind of funny, but the students kind of bullied him, and he was supposed to try to stop them from bullying him or to render them speechless by reacting in a way that we should react. And then for the cooperation, we did a game of Hungry Hungry Hippos. It got pretty interesting, but I think the, how was the first assembly? For the first assembly, the eighth graders won. The eighth graders won Hungry Hungry Hippos, and then for the second assembly, the fourth graders won. Because we had a one-on-one group. But, it was, I think it was really fun for most of the students there. They all really enjoyed it. And beforehand, to like have our schoolwork all together, we had a dress-up thing where we all, each grade got a color, but seventh grade ended up winning that. And it, they had like 100 percent something, and then the other, the other grades had like 90, some had 50. It was just all over the place, but it was a lot of fun because we got to like, as a school, learn about how we can make an impact. And like, it was kind of, I don't know how to explain it. Well, we made an impact by like showing other students. Seventh grade really tried hard. Like, we all planned it and we were all just sitting there talking with each other because we knew we had to make an impact and show the school that we could all work together and all get this accomplished. So, we had 100 percent total compared to the other grades.
This year, our Student Council has also planned different dances for the sixth, for grades six through eight. And right now, we are currently, eighth grade is currently working on semi-formal. And the theme for semi-formal is going to be Starry Night, and the date for semi-formal is going to be on June 1st. And for the dances, the Student Council members plan games and set up a photo booth for every dance. And they've also worked concession stands, so, at the dances. And then the themes for the different dances this year have been Winter Wonderland, Fall, Jungle, and the one that is being played right now is Starry Night.
Okay, so, for, we have this thing at our school and it's just, we're trying to do it more often now. We've done it twice this year. We've done kindness month. And for ours, we originally started it, and we had a box and we put it in the library. And people would go in there, put their name on a sheet, put the person they're nominating's name on a sheet, and then put like why they're nominating them. And then we'd pull random people out every week and we'd announce them because we wanted to honor the people that were being kind and doing great things. Like, teachers could nominate other teachers, students could nominate teachers, students could nominate other students. It was just everywhere, and we had so many nominations, it was so much fun reading them all. And we wrote notes to people that got multiple. We wrote them notes and we thanked them. It was a lot of fun. I just loved writing the notes to them because we got to thank them personally for everything they've done for our school. And we also did kindness bracelets. So, staff were kind of like kindness spies. They found people around, well, students around the school that were being kind without really knowing that they were kindness spies and handing out bracelets. And if they did something kind, they handed out a bracelet, just to let them know, Ms. Krueger's got one on right now, the kindness bracelets. Every Student Council member got one, and then if a teacher saw you being kind, they would hand you a bracelet. Sometimes they'd try to give you two because they didn't like read the instructions beforehand, but then you just told them you already had one by being responsible like that, and then they just handed you, took it back, and they kept it themselves. It was, I think, a lot of fun. I mean, it was just a lot of bonding with our teachers. It was teacher-student bonding almost, because the teacher got to come up to you, tell you what you did, get a bracelet almost. Sometimes they didn't tell you, they just tell you that you were like being respectful, but they didn't like go over the like clarification on that. But, it was still a lot of fun knowing that you were getting rewarded for doing something good in your community. So, for fundraising this year, we did penny wars. We raised $600 for an NHS student fighting cancer. It was students versus staff, pennies versus silver and bills. We, I think we did really well on that. Somebody donated like a $50 bill. Yeah. Because they wanted the staff to lose so bad, they just put $50 on the bill. But, we raised so much money that it was worth it. Like, they didn't care and they were just happy to be doing something good. And then the other fundraiser was the candy cane sales. We stole, we sold, we sold 1,548 candy canes for 50 cents each. So, the overall profit was about $531. And the profit we earned went towards JAM, so the Student Council Conference we talked about earlier. Those profits went to JAM. And I think another fundraiser we did was work at basketball games. Yeah, we did a lot. So, we worked in the concession stand and that, I think, earned $7.50 per shift for JAM. So, we needed $50 to get to JAM, and most students paid off their entire JAM by working basketball games and...
We did a little fundraiser, some popcorn.
We did little fundraisers. That was fun for everybody.
What was, what is JAM?
JAM was a Student Council Conference.
Junior, junior high and middle school. It's an overnight conference.
Yeah, yeah.
It stands for junior high and middle school.
Some other projects and activities that our Student Council has worked on this year is kindness bracelets.
Humane Society helpers, Red Ribbon Week, Spirit Week, Red Mass of Kindness. We had a Student Council Secret Santa Dinner.
New students slash teachers surprise.
St. Patty's Day. Art and graphic design.
Amazing Race helpers.
And Activity Night helpers. So, we, we didn't plan all these, but we helped with them and made sure they actually worked out. So, we got everyone working on everything. There's definitely more things we did than this. We just highlighted these. It's really hard to remember everything you do on council because it's, you go from one project to another and it's, you don't really go back to that same project. It's just one project, you move on to the next thing to, because you've already done that project, you move on to the next, so you can get another project done, help your school better. All right, so, thank you for watching. Is there any questions from anyone?
The Student Council is representative of all grades?
Six through eight.
Six through eight.
There's 10 from eighth grade, eight from eighth grade. And then there's me and Robin, we're the vice president and president of the school.
I want to congratulate you on your service, and not only your service, but your, you know... You got a silver at this event. That's pretty special. How many schools were there?
Oh, quite a few. There were a lot.
There were over 800 students in attendance.
Wow.
We like, some of us just like, we were so happy to be there. I know us, we had hung out a lot, so we like walked up to random people, like students from their schools, because like you can tell like they have their shirts on and stuff. We walked up to them, we just like said our names, and we just said, "Want to be friends?" And they were like, "Sure." So, we ended up... It was really nice. It was definitely worth going. Everyone's super nice there. You can make friends with literally anyone because everyone was super nice. And it's overnight. Yeah. It's all day Sunday, and then we leave Monday afternoon.
Well, thank you. What's exciting is to hear what you did, you know, brought back, and certainly you'll bring back next year to the school. So, that's exciting. And thank you, advisors.
Big round of applause. I want to thank the advisors as well for your hard work on that.
We're still tired from JAM.
Thank you for the prayers. Okay, at this point, we'd like to recognize the service of board member David Schmidt. David served on our board for nine, nine years. And Mr. Schmidt was definitely a person that I consider a role model. When I joined, when I joined the, when I joined the, uh, the board. Recognition of your service, we've got a little, little thing for you. You want to get up and say something?
So, I, uh...
Your service, your service was greatly appreciated, and you will be missed. And I'm sure that Cody, Cody's going to do a good job going initially.
I'm going to miss being with you here, but I want something else.
Yeah, and I hope to see you in the crowd, you know, as we move through our business. And, you know, for a good board member, it also takes a good wife. And so, we miss you, we want to recognize you as well. So, thank you, guys, for coming here. Okay, communicating with the board, um, two minutes.
I think it's going to be longer than two minutes, but...
We wrote down two minutes.
All right. See how Josh does.
Um, I...
I like your style.
No, at this time, we'd like, I'd like to turn the floor over to Lynn Knight for Business Services, Board SaaS, and Operations update.
Mr. Mahan, I made a comment in previous board meetings about our camera system, and it was a good comment, and it brought to light some issues that we were having. So, tonight, I invited our technology service, Hartland. Josh Strike is here, and I also have our tech, tech guy, Sonata Lau. So, I told Josh he has 15 minutes to give you an update on what the issues we had, how they were fixed, and where we're going for the future.
You can go by lens directly.
15 minutes, huh? No pressure.
You can go loud.
You can go loud. That's the goal. That is the goal.
Yes, Josh, okay, not that much. I want to just give you a brief, um, introduction of our security camera system. We have that new system for about two, three uses, a junior project. And this system is communicated from a junior system because, um, the needs can be moved to expand as well as the security. So, we have a very, um, very good intention to make this to be very robust and fit in a future extension. And, but because it's a real, so we want me to, some hours, and the last two, three, three months, and we identify, please, put in a lot more resource to it to try to identify the issues so we can, um, put together a current fixed power. In the meantime, we are working on our service provider, common business, and Josh and... That try to identify the problems and, and also that, to make sure that it was time that we need the protection, we actually get the protection. And finally, I think, um, that we got to the point that we got the problem solved, and I think, I can say 99 percent of the system, the smartest cameras, as we're, um, monitoring, the way we want, and we should not have any issues that, you know, provide protection here. And also, we, also, um, put in a few more effort to try to identify the possibility of expanding the vision. In the meantime, I'll, I'll explain to you what we have found and what we have done to improve.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thanks for having us here. I'm Josh Strike. I'm from Hartland Business Systems. Actually, I think Kus has been a partner of mine in Hartland's. I've been at Hartland's for almost 13 years. I think we've worked together almost that long. I think I presented to some of you, so thanks for, thanks for having me again. Next, we have Lee Gardner. Lee is our life safety team leader. He's also the engineer who spent many, many hours on the system as it is today. And so, we were asked to provide an update. So, work for me. There it goes. Well, that gets the resolution a little, I don't worry about that right now. But, a few things that I just wanted to talk about. I thought it would be helpful to kind of talk about kind of known issues, previously known issues, and the action steps that we took to remediate those. But, I also think it's important to talk about the system in general, the continuous improvements that we need to make. It is a system, it requires a lot of guaranteeing, and we're going to talk about some of that as well. And then, of course, some questions and answers. So, hopefully, everybody can read that okay. But, I tried to identify these in a few different buckets. So, there's four, four previously known issues that I want to talk about. Recording and playback, some of the cameras just weren't recording, weren't capturing any video, right? Which, of course, won't allow you to look at playback of that video because it wasn't capturing it. The second item is there was some choppiness when you were trying to look at some full motion video, right? That we wanted to address. The third thing is there's just some surveillance coverage issues. The camera systems that you have right now, or the cameras that you have, might not get far enough down a hallway, right? So, we just have some, some coverage issues that we want to address. And then, lastly, we've had some, I think there was four cameras that actually had some physical hardware that we were able to replace. All right, so, this looks the same, but these are the remediation steps that we took, so I'll just kind of go through, and you feel free to chime in if you, if you think of anything. But, the recording and playback, one of the reasons why the cameras weren't catching some video is because we had it set to motion only, right? And how the cameras work is that on motion, it'll start recording once there's enough pixels that change on your digital cameras, right? If there's not enough change on that, then it's not going to record on motion. So, what we did is we changed it from recording on motion only to continuous recording. So, that way, we can ensure that we're capturing the footage that you need, okay? Full motion video performance, what's happening a lot of times, the, um, the videos that we're trying to view, we're trying to view them right from the server. So, what we want to do yet is we want to load the software onto whatever administrators' machines that we choose as an organization here, right? That's no additional cost to do that. So, then you can view them from really any PC rather than viewing them right from the server that's doing the recording and the live playback, right? So, we have some opportunities there to optimize that. Surveillance coverage issues, we've been working with the district on a plan to add more cameras, right? Because there's, one camera can only go so far. So, we've done some walkthroughs of all of the schools. We worked with Sonata and his team and Josh, and identified the areas of high need that we need to make sure that we're capturing footage in those, those areas of high need. And then, you know, with the, with the physical issues of those cameras, we were actually able to place them, they were under full warranty, so there was no additional cost to the district on the cameras that actually had issues. I'm going to pause. Is there any questions so far on kind of the known issue, remediation steps? Okay?
I guess one question.
Sure.
A lot of these changes were as a result of the overhaul that we did two years ago. And within the scope of that project, you know, there were certain parameters to, you know, define what your expectations and, you know, from your side within that plan. I'm just wondering about additional costs, um, with going to continuous recording. Is there going to be additional cost for that, that memory, additional cameras? Or is it going to hurt us in the future?
That's a very good question. So, from going from motion only to continuous recording, what happened is that the amount of time that we can retain that video would shrink unless we would buy some more storage. But, what we're going to do to try to combat that is we can do some continuous recording at a lower frame per second, rather than full-on recording at a higher frame per second. What that will allow us to do is still capture all of that video footage, right? We're continuously recording, it's just at a lower frame per second, which would not affect the storage investment that the district would have to make. Does that make sense? Is that clear? Is that your question?
What's here anticipated? Fourteen days, two weeks, what's here anticipated?
Right now, we're at fifteen on continuous. Our goal through the upgrade would be thirty.
Any additional cameras, um, did we miss areas in the scope of the review prior to the project? Or, you know, is there going to be some cost for additional cameras?
I think it was just, uh, the district needs on areas where they needed to, uh, kind of have, have footage available, right? Um, had, had changed a little bit, right? So.
On the cross, one more.
Yeah, on the, on the cameras, the additional cameras, of course, yeah.
That will be part of the plan that we're going to be looking at in the future. And I think, Sanada, you walked through with all the principles, correct? And, um, the, the project mainly dealt with the PA system. When we purchased the cameras and the cabling, it was mainly with E-rate funds and a grant fund. So, we tried to get as money, as much money that we could outside of the district in order to make sure that we were taking care of. We knew it was just a start. We knew that there was going to be additional cameras down the road. It's just a matter of where we're going to find the money.
I think, you know, when we first settled to settle the first system, we just go by whoever's best information, you know, the bigger the needs. And, of course, you know, as time goes by, then we identify spots and we know which. And then we want to just put it on the table and in the future we can address them. But what I'm, what I'm trying to say is tonight is our system, current system that we settled to is do its job. And all the cameras, we can constantly monitor it and we have all upon it. And then the footage is, um, we can retrieve the footage with no power. So, those are two main goals, you know, for security cameras, in case anything happens. At any given time that, you know, we can monitor our system, you know, cameras backing out and clearing the patients. But again, you know, with the future expansion, which, uh, we identify our spots wanting, and again, you know, there's a much optimized project, you know, it's a, this is a lot of discussion. And, because we want a best system, but in the meantime, we also need to cover the reality of what we are, what we are told. So, we all keep the best representation as we have to, you know, administration, as well as the board, we decide. But I just wanted to assure you guys that currently our system is working fine. And any footage we need, we can get it off with no power. And our redemption stage is not fifteen minutes. But the full motion recording as well as, you know, expanded storage, that can be next stage, we can work that in the future. And, yeah, one thing that I also want to mention is since our system now is functioning correctly, and we can start to offer, like, minimal surveillance, that we can go closer and, you know, use departments, that in case anything happens, we can have a firsthand feeling of what's happening in this district.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, great question. We look at the, we look at the, a good analogy of security systems with all the school districts that we work with is there's got to be a place to start, right? You can't cover every, every new thing, so it was really important for us to get started, right, get the coverage that we need right now. But with the upgrades that we're talking about, the great thing about the system that was architected is it's scalable, right? So, we're able to leverage a lot of the existing investments that the district has made on the current system without having to rebuy. And so, that was another goal of ours through this.
And one of the things that we always keep in mind that we don't want to practice this part, which we know we have to access with the cameras, something. There will be a future that will let me have the plan, the plan, so know what additional spots we are going to have. Is there any question, any questions about her system? Thank you very much.
No, we're going to let Josh go.
Yeah, no, that's, that's possible. But I would say that, um, you know, there's, there was a lot of time that we've invested into making sure that you're in a good spot. And I just wanted to highlight some of the things, and I'm not going to go through them all, right? But we put a lot of work in making sure that the, that the system is in a good spot. The other thing that I think is really important that we're working with the district on is the continuous improvement of the system. That's really important. Again, it is a system, it does require some guaranteeing and a lot of time investment to, to put into making sure that it's a solid system. So, things like, we're going to do some monthly check-ins, make sure that this is, this is up and running. We want to make sure that you're on the latest versions of firmware on the cameras and your video management system, right? And, you know, the list goes on, but it never stops, right? And so, those are the things that we're going to partner with the district on and make sure that we have a continually running, uh, optimizing system.
And I also want to mention that, um, we have very good relationships with our common business. And the system that we have then found is problems and they have been working on it and working on it the last, it is more than a year from that. And then, finally, we ask them, we expect a lot more time to try to identify the different issues. And then we got, we finally get to kind of what we're somewhere in a good spot. And all this work in, uh, probably does not cause us anything to actually, so we have to sit on the original project.
Two questions, Mr. Mahan, and two.
And so, that, that is what I had, is are there any questions that I can help address?
Well, just, uh, and Sanada, you probably know the answer. We want to eventually get this to the courthouse, right, if we come to your department. So, that, we're all ready for that, correct?
Oh, yeah, so like all of the, the VMS that you have today is fully capable of doing that. There's no additional license cost for you to do that. It's really just a matter of some configuration time to do that. Even the ability for administrators that you decide can have mobile access for cameras, whether it's within their building, entire district, whatever it may be.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much. Just, Sanada, it's good to see you. It's been quite a while.
Thank you for your work.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I did want to acknowledge that we do have two students here coming.
Yes, we do. And Mr. Rogers would be introducing them, so, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but would you guys introduce yourselves? And they've got something, something to share.
Fantastic.
In place of, uh, our traditional parent update, right?
Yeah, and I apologize for skipping ahead earlier, so thank you. The floor is here.
So, my name is Nicky Matoya, I'm in eighth grade. And this is Dylan Broome, he's in fifth grade. And we are part of a water quality program around our school. The creek we're using around our school is called the Link Creek. And we all, and we go to NCTA and we use the little yellow river.
Um, we do a bunch of stuff. We do a bunch of chemical tests. And we want to just check the river and pull the quality of the river. Because, uh, we have, we have a biologist that, at the end of the project, we're presenting to. And this biologist, his name is Brad Sow. He, uh, he wants to make the river healthier and better. And so, to do that, we need to do this data. And we need to make sure that all this data is down so that he can change the river or he can do the things to change the river. And he can make sure that he's changing it in a positive way instead of changing it in a negative way or just changing it all.
So, the ways, so the reason why we do this is, you know, that some of the chemical testing we do out in field are like the transparency. So, the way we test transparency is we had a tube, a.
Twenty B two.
A fifty B two, which you pull it up. Right now, we have a sixty.
Centimeter.
Centimeter tube. And we came across, came across today that there are larger tubes, we think, good. So, with the sixty centimeter, sixty centimeter tube, we pull it up with the river water. Then there is a pipe at the bottom where you release water. If you can't see, there's a such, such a disk at the bottom. If you can't see it, then it, you are able to see sixty centimeters down in the river that is clear. Anything farther than that, if the stream is deeper, we will not be able to see. But other tests we do, like nitrate is an important one. So, with that one, we would test, I mean, nitrate levels are in the water. Mostly, we have came across, say, around.
It's not very high usually. Um, we do a bunch of tests, like nitrate, phosphate, and what do you nitrogen? And just a bunch of other ones, like iron and stuff like that, or even pH levels.
So, the major ones we do is, is all that. We test how much oxygen is in the water for the macroinvertebrates are able to live in it. And the way we test that is we get a, um.
We have a, we have a bottle and we hold it under the stream, missing, or we hold it down the stream. And we put it on there for two minutes, we get, cap it under water, make sure that no air was getting in the link outside of the river and are affecting our results. And we want to follow the same procedures every single time. Because we always give humidity first. Because if we get in there, we do all the tests, and we kick up sediment off the ground, then it could affect our transparency that we can, that we can see in the water.
So, once we're done with all the chemical tests, we, we would get a net. And so, it would be me or someone else in our group, our group. It's six people right now. So, there's me, Dylan, and there is Erica.
Eric Deurer, Max Michaels, Matthew Gildenblatt, Matthew Gildenblatt, and Simon Burke. So, that's everybody in our group. And we just do the chemical tests and we take a biotic index to take, to, uh, uh, determine the quality of the water. Because we have four different types of bug species, or like, kind of, not bug species, but, uh, categories of bug species fit into. And we have tolerant, semi-tolerant, semi-sensitive, and sensitive. And, uh, there are, so they're tolerant to pollutants or, uh, so if we get a bunch of bug species in the tolerant, that means our water is very bad. Because it's all really tolerant to pollutants, which means they're okay with that and that they're, they're fine dealing with it. Like, Link Creek is poor. Most of our results have been, therefore, had one decent one, which didn't even reach up to an okay.
No, it was just, listen, failing, failing, but it was just bad.
Still, so, we take our biotic indexes to determine our water quality.
So, the way we do the biotic index score is we count up all of the macroinvertebrates are in each group. Then, in one group, we will times it by zero, times it by one, this two, this three, and four. Then we'll add up all the numbers, divided by how many numbers, I mean, are more than very much weak? Or is that my point?
I don't know. But.
But you know what, guys? You have shared a lot with us.
Yeah, it's always going to keep going on too.
Yeah.
Because you know your subject matter.
We've made, we've had spreadsheets. And we, we are just finishing up the spreadsheet right now. We're presenting to biologist May twenty-ninth, I think, something like that. So.
Oh, I see. How long have you been working on the project?
Um, about one and a half months. Started, uh.
Snow melted.
Yeah. We were, we were there in snow one time, couldn't, some of us couldn't even get in the water.
That was scary, right? NCTA, our south side, it was very deep, so the only people that could get in was either me, Erica Deurer, which is a little color here, and then our teacher.
And our teacher, his, his was looking like right, almost overfilling his waders.
Wow, yeah. Well, could you get us an update on what you report? You know, and maybe in a, a, a written format, so we could share with the board?
I mean, we have a spreadsheet.
Okay, yeah.
We have a spreadsheet, we have data sheets, a bunch of data sheets.
So, yeah, have your teachers share with myself?
We have, uh, we shared a slide with Mr. Black.
I was looking for it, but it never came through.
I did share it with you when we got back around to Cory.
All right, well, we can share that out.
I'll make sure I get that too.
I think you've done the best CWSA update so far, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Give a round of applause. Are your parents here?
My dad's here.
Thank you very much for your support and these kids and the programs that they do. It's important that they're behind you, and so, great job, guys.
Have a great night.
Yep, looking forward to seeing you again. Uh, Mr. Brian Grill, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, done. All right, I have two.
No, please.
Two things for you guys. Um, there is, through the Department of Justice, there is a school safety grant out there where we can potentially be awarded twenty thousand dollars per school in school safety improvements. And there's two parts that can go into more detail later. But the application is due by the beginning of June. And I am working with the, with, um, Mr. Josh Colo, I'm working with Sanada, I'm working with Lynn, I'm working with Terry. Because there's opportunities there for us to get the funding to do this. And it's, it can pay for some of the camera improvements, it can pay for some of those things. And I went to my director's conference and just learned more about the application process. But I'll keep you up to date as we submit the application and where we are in that grant. Because that's a great opportunity for our schools, so. Um, the other thing I'm working on this year when doing budget assurances, DPI added another report for us. So, there is the LEA Plan that outlines different areas that we have to report to make sure that we are making sure we're closing achievement gaps, we're addressing concerns with our English language learners. We are making sure our homeless youth are serviced. So, this report we're working on is due June thirtieth before our federal money grants are released to us for Ju- July one. So, that's a report that I've been requesting the help of all the principals and all different staff in those areas to help fill out that report. But I will be organizing that report and writing that report with the help of Nathan. So, that way, we are good to go for next year. But that's a large process as well, and a process that will happen every single year.
And I'm just going to ask you here for the first time.
For the very first time, so it's a brand new report. So, it's a lengthy one, but we'll get it done.
Lots of teamwork.
Lots of teamwork.
And not much time.
Correct. They're releasing everything right now and, and having a turnaround very quick. So, we're just waiting a lot to get done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grill. Mr. Mr. Nifrah, our, our board representative, um, is today here?
Uh, I will be here in June and again in July, we'll transition.
Very good, very good. The floor is here.
All right, thank you. So, we've had a lot of events across the past month. I'd like to recognize a few of those. Firstly, congratulating those who won at the SEC Art Show. Also, like to recognize the artwork that these students put in at the Tech Ed and, and art community project at the Rome Dog Park. And Inquirer had concerts on the last Monday and yesterday. We'd like to congratulate them on their shows. Also, like to congratulate the SEC Top Ten, um, we're in a big Westfield plasma. We'd like to congratulate Ms. Jackson, who was recognized as an FBLA Outstanding State Advisor. varsity golf won their conference meet today, so they have one conference. And Track is meeting, or is doing the conference meet right now, so we'll figure out which results tomorrow. Um, there are also several events in the next month that I would like to mention. So, Scholarship Night is tomorrow at the NHS Auditorium. The REES Awards are Wednesday, the twenty-third, at the Community Center. There's a choir variety show Wednesday, the thirtieth, at Big Brother School. Also, on May thirtieth, the Project Search graduation is at the Rapids Community Theater. And the University Schools Night at the Rapids Game is June sixth. And the University Schools Night at the Rapids Game is June sixth. And then, of course, NHS Graduation, June tenth, at GBM in the NHS gym. As far as student council goes, we held elections yesterday. How you're kind of looking after that the last couple of weeks. Marissa Harish is next year's student council president, she will be in June or next year. And she'll be here in July with me to transition to, uh, next year.
Good news on the golf, is that they're second year in a row?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Fantastic, and it's relatively new. Has it been three years since the program?
Oh, no, it does. Last year was our first conference campaign.
Okay, okay. That's great news. Thank you very much, Mr. Nifrah. Another board work. At this time, we are looking to review and renew our Safeway contract. Ms. Lynn, Mike.
We have four individuals from Safeway here, Tracy, Steph, Bob, and Ann. And, um, like I said, we look at this contract every other year to, um, and Tracy, why don't you explain? Because you're the expert in this.
Well, um, we just, we do the contract where we do the rates for two years so that we're not meeting every year. So we go every other year, we get to have a visit with you guys. Um, the contract really doesn't change other than we do like to cancel out the old contract and issue a new. And that is simply for when we purchase buses, we amortize them over the five years. Um, and when we're doing it with our banks, they like to see that we have a contract in place for that duration of time. Um, and that is the basic reason that we have that first of all. We haven't changed much. Uh, the pricing on buses has changed immensely. Um, we, this is our seventh year, we've been here a long time. And, you know, just, there's a ton of changes, the, the safety, the, um, the bullying on the buses. There's so many different things that change every year. But basically, our policies and procedures stay the same. We have a great communication with you guys, we meet with Brian and Lynn. Um, if you guys have any questions for us, I mean, we're ha- we're all here to answer your questions, so.
You know, I think, you know, I think Safeway, you need to be recognized as being a part of our educational system. You know, those kids, you greet them in the mornings and you send them home at nights. And, you know, you're a big part of their day and we thank you for the work that you do in that and, uh, continue to do in that. Any other questions from the board? At this point, uh, I'll call for a motion to approve the contract as presented in our report package. We have a first and a second. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming and again, continue the good work.
I was telling Lynn earlier, um, but, you know, when we purchase buses, we do it with Rappis District in here because we're, we work time and change easily. Um, but two of the buses that we're purchasing this year are going directly to the Nacusa terminal. But you'll have two random ones in your fleet this time, so.
Do you agree to try that, Bob?
So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, have a good night.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, um, we have a proposal for the school nutrition contract. We put a roughly, I believe it was in November or October, Lynn? November. The board made a motion to, um, put bids out for servicing our school nutrition program. This was done because of some of the financial, uh, predicaments that we were in and what we saw. The bid went out to all of the providers that are approved by DPI. The project and scope that was required of Lynn to get that started was a very labor-intensive process. We did receive a bid, um, for the school nutrition contract. And there was a bid review committee. Following the bid review committee, there was, the provider came in last week Thursday and provided a presentation on the services that they would be willing to offer through this bid. It's a very, very, I, I need to preface this, and then Lynn, would you like to say anything about it? Okay, this is a difficult decision. Our costs, last year we were about a hundred thousand dollars short, um, in the food services. It's a self-sustaining, um, group or fund and it hasn't been self-sustaining. And we've had to take monies that were otherwise allocated for education or other purposes and, and move things around. Any other discussion items from board members prior to motion on the floor?
Well, I, I would agree.
I, maybe I should just explain that this school nutrition, if we, if this motion is approved, what would happen is our food services for our, for our district would be contracted out to a provider that specializes in servicing, um, schools such as ours. There's some huge implications in this. Our current staff members, valued staff members, would no longer be employees of the district. Part of the requirements that we put out in the bed proposal, bid proposal, were that all current employees would retain their pay, would retain their jobs, and their hours. The benefits do change as we become part, if they become a part of a new company. But, you know, that, that's something that, that Lynn put in that, uh, bid proposal as a requirement. The first year is a guaranteed contract. And at this time, that guarantee would provide us an immediate one hundred thousand dollar savings, you know, from our current situation. The biggest, the biggest, the effects of those valued people in our, in our lunch programs that have served this district so well and so long. The cost increases have been primarily due to rising food costs. Lynn presented us with a three-year, um, chart of how the costs have increased. And it, it's put us in a position where it's just, with the requirements that the federal government has put upon us as well as our state, it's put us in a situation where it's almost, you know, it's almost a no-win situation. We have to balance that, that, that budget in one way or the other. I asked introduction on, and I talked to many board discussions. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian.
No, that's okay. I, I just agree with you. Difficult decision that this is. And I would, I guess, begin by saying I don't have any reservations about all the service that Todd provided in this district. The presentation was good, I think it speaks for itself. My only, um, struggle here is that I'm not sure that from November to now, we exhausted our options with our current staff. I don't know that we brought them in, harnessed their ideas, asked them where we could take them, asked them to implement new ideas. I think we failed with that, we didn't do it. I'm not naive enough to think that this vote isn't something that is maybe inevitable in the future. But I wonder if we've made that decision too fast. There are times I think that my perception was this decision has already been predetermined. It's a yes. And I think that's how we should operate. I think it's probably the fiscally appropriate thing to do, but for the reasons I mentioned just before.
Second motion.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor at this point, so just discuss it. Is this, you know, I think that like with Brian's sort of vote, you know, because I don't know, I haven't heard any other option. I, I know from our discussion on Thursday that other options apply to the best deal. With some people, we're tied down, who are the benefits would be pretty much on anyway, I would correct you that.
We'd have to do something.
Right, we'd have to do something. I, you know, we heard from the staff a little bit on Thursday, you know, their questions. But do we need, I guess what I'm saying is, do we need to, do we need to put this to a vote tonight? And the answer is yes on that, with the timing, with the timing that we have, um... The timing is, we've gone right to the edge. We've gone right to the edge. And, you know, it, it kind of boils down to what, what causes the most harm. Yeah. You know, the, you know, the guaranteed cost savings, the guaranteed retention of the employees' powers versus the, the other options of trying to balance the budget. Also, is my understanding right that this contract would be for just one year? Yes. If we are not satisfied at that time, we could go back to what we were willing to do, something else. I don't like this. I agree with Brian, this is, you know, um, this is not an easy decision to make, this is... Please talk. And it, it almost seems, and I hate to say this, you know, but our financial situation is, is driving this more so than anything. And I don't know if we even looked at other options, other, any other options to get out of our financial situation. I think, I think that's...
Well, it's unfortunately...
I think that's going to become part of our discussion and move forward in almost every aspect because of the the revenues that we have and we're, we're, we're as a district. You know, we're saying no one who needs the services, that it's becoming, it's becoming more and more difficult.
But it is important to note that Lynn and the nutrition program have been working on this, this didn't just crop up overnight. We've been working on this for the last three or four years.
Which is what I'm saying, why have we, we've done nothing quite earnest that they did, why haven't we done? What can we do? I don't see any, have we done anything? I think the answer is no. We just kept writing and hoping, trying to bring money. And now we're funded, that's what I feel.
There was a miracle last week on Chapel Falls that had a school watch program, had some issues, we did. It resorted to community donations from local businesses. That's another option we're looking to as well, in regards to the research and funding, and stuff like that.
And I'm saying that this isn't an appropriate discussion to have. I mean, we may have no choice, and maybe today is, we have no choice but to go for it. But I'm questioning what we failed to do to get here.
Right.
And I, and I would respect anybody's goal, but...
Sure. No, I appreciate everybody's patience. And Cody, did I interrupt you at all, or do you have any further things?
Not far, I think Brian coming in also.
At this time, the board president is calling for a motion to approve Tawker for the school nutrition services effective seven one, two thousand eight. We have a motion on the floor, and the first. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Brian, one?
Yep.
Forty, is this, not, Dr. Houston?
Yes.
Brian, two?
It doesn't happen often, but the burden falls on the board president in the result of a tie. I need to make the statement that this is by far one of the hardest decisions we've faced as a board as it affects some very, very valued members of our, our school. And, you know, members that live in our community, that, that touch our kids every day. And, you know, the situation that we're in with regards to our revenues and the federal requirements, the state requirements, I, I see ourselves as victims. And, you know, Mr. Co- Cody made a very good point about, you know, the communities having to back up the schools. And we're in a situation where our community is going to have to be helping our school more in the future. And that's going to be part of our, have to be part of our, our, our focus as a board. With that being said, um, yes. Motion has passed.
And I guess thank you to the, our nutrition program folks and the board for, you know, the administration has worked hard.
And, you know, I think...
And so this is just as been, it's just been just as hard for administration?
You know, our burden now is to assist these people sitting behind me, our staff, in this trend, in the way, in, in our changeover. That burden is on us to, to do our best for them. And, you know, with, with what Brian Mahan's comments are, you know, were, you know, about how we can look to the future and try to plan for these things. That's where I think our burden needs to be. All I can do is, you know, I have to hope for the best for, for, for our students and for, for, for our staff. And they, they need to know, each and every one of them, that in no part, they did their jobs, they worked hard, they came here and did their jobs every day. This decision is by no means reflective on that. They are outstanding members of our community and should be recognized as such. This decision was driven by the forces that we don't have control. There will be harder, there will be decisions just as hard as we found this road of limited revenues and, and more government restrictions. Any further comments? Thank you, everybody. Okay, school nutrition program breakfast and lunch prices. Board president calls for a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school lunch prices reflecting a five cent increase over the prior year price. The breakfast prices will remain the same. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen membership audit report. Board president calls for approval of a... Court president calls for approval of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen membership audit as presented in our packets.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Policy governance, R4 collaborative and responsible citizens. Within policy governance, in the calendar years that since the, since we instituted policy governance, this is the first time that results policy four has come up for our review. As such, the information that we're going to be discussing is, is relatively new and we, we, as we develop this and flesh it out over the next year, I want to commend Mr. Houston, he's done some research on some, some, some types of medicals that, that we'll be introducing to the, to the team. I would like to, for R4, is there any discussion? Basically, I'd like to ask Mr. Whitmore to summarize the collaborative and responsible citizens results policy that we've defined.
So I'll, I'll read it and then just talk a little bit about what's been shared from each school. So all students are productive and collaborative contributors in the workplace and in society. And with that, students will demonstrate self-confidence and self-respect, taking responsibility for their own actions, and able to give and receive constructive criticism. So each school outlined steps that they're taking, much of which comes from a responsive classroom and conscious discipline, meetings, morning meetings, and the work that is done in the classroom. The policy also calls for, four point two, demonstrate a positive work ethic and responsible independence. And at each of the schools, again, we're working really hard on helping kids become responsibly independent. What does that look like? What does that sound like at each of the grade levels? And that's practiced throughout the day with a lot of teaching and learning going on in advisories. The four point three, this, this policy also calls for communicating effectively, including active listening, to understand the opinions and perspectives of others in order to develop respectful and mutually supportive relationships. And this is so much about what's in the news today. How do we really help our kids be active listeners and responding to each other through communication? So lots of the work that we've been doing in ELA and math, we're having kids work together, solve problems together where they have to be listeners. Four point four, actively convey ideas, feelings, and beliefs, considering content, appropriate context, and delivery. So conveying those same ideas, lots of opportunities in the workshop model, ELA and CPM math, where students are having to work in groups, read things, convey messages, and then, you know, put it into context and in, in delivery that's understandable by all. And then four point five is understand and practice the rights and responsibilities of contributing members of society. So here's a, a snapshot at AMS throughout students' seventh and eighth grade year. We study what it means to be a responsible citizen in the United States of America. At this time, students uncover their rights as individuals of our nation, students analyze the documents that founded America, and we discuss what it means for today as America. Students understand not only the rights we have, but how to be a contributing member of our society to benefit the future as well. That's understanding and practicing the rights and responsibilities of contributing members of society. And the last one is accepting personal responsibility for creating worthy outcomes, quality of life, and social justice. And at the high school, to take a snapshot of the high school, this work is done through advisory and much of the work at Humpkin, AMS also is related to advisory, but the high school has freshman seminar where they dig into this quite deeply. So that is R4 collaborative and responsible citizens.
Thank you, Carrie. And, you know, this is, this is something that, you know, we as a board, you know, this is setting the framework and, you know, at this, from this point forward, we're going to be looking at how we can measure our success in these areas and, you know, I shouldn't, it's going to, the administrative team is going to be working on that. At this time, I call for a motion to approve the results policy, R4 collaborative and responsible citizens as presented. Motion on the floor. We have, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, operator, operational education thirteen, facilities management, I'm very pleased to say that Lynn, in conjunction with Mr. Steve Hersberg, prepared a comprehensive list of projects that, you know, capital projects, building improvements. We've identified a priority to this. This is, as, this is what, you know, in the previous year when OE thirteen was presented, one of the things that we found was that we needed, that listing to be created and indeed, Mr. Hersberg and Lynn have completed that. We've found no, we've found no exceptions. At this time, I'd like to put a motion on this. I call for a motion to approve policy OE thirteen facilities as presented and verified by the board.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Doug Houston.
Second.
We have a second. Pat Rzeszowski. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. GP four. GP four is a board job description. Essentially, it outlines the fiduciary responsibilities and definitions of how we as board members conduct ourselves. This was sent electronically to all the board members and any non-compliances were, were meant to be gathered and sent in. And there were no non-compliances bound, sent in. However, as part of continuous improvement with regards to these GP policies, am I looking at the camera and does it work?
Yes.
Okay. We as a board, I think, need to hold ourselves possibly to a higher standard and provide documentation such as we expect our administration. So in the future, we're going to be looking at, at identifying how we as a board are meeting these, these expectations. And one of them is, you know, how we, how we work out in the community and being advocates and working with our stakeholders. But with that in mind, no exceptions noted. Motion on the floor to accept House Operational Expectation, excuse me, GP four as presented. Motion on the floor. We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That same goes for the next, next, next GP six. GP six covers board committees. At times committees will be formed and work will be done. Committee members do not direct staff, they provide recommendations to the board, the board acts as a whole. We sent out, again, we sent out emails, no exceptions are noted. Board president calls for a motion to approve governance process, GP six, board committee's policy monitoring report as presented and verified by the board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. We have some resignations, retirements, and employment. Does any, anybody want to speak to any of these items?
I'd like to speak to Colleen.
Okay.
Colleen has been with the district for thirty-one years.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years. And she has been educational assistant in our classroom for students with intellectual disabilities and has been working collaboratively with Carrie Copeland for twenty-eight of those thirty-one years they have been together. So it's with, I talked with Colleen personally and it was a very hard decision for her. She felt like she still loves coming into her job every single day. She's like, it just felt like it was the right time for her, but she said it was also one of the hardest decisions she had to make. Because she said for the longest time she imagined her and Carrie retiring together. I told Carrie she's not allowed to retire, but she just felt it was the right time. But I have the utmost respect for Colleen and wish her the best in retirement, so.
Thirty?
Thirty-one years.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
I'll also acknowledge Gail and her work here the past couple of years and the opportunity she has, her and her husband are starting small business and I wish as well, and she, Gail's been really helpful with a number of things and one of those things with pertaining to curriculum and then work around that and she will be most, so I thank her for her work and the effort.
And then also Kirsten?
And Kirsten too, Kirsten, it's not listed right now, but Kirsten Kistner is also joining that and we wish her well in her next opportunities as well too.
And Austin Lund at AMS?
Clinton's in here, but I can go ahead and talk, speak to that one. Austin's been with us for the last two years. Last year, he worked as eighth grade, stepped into science, and then he moved over to fifth grade in this area. I worked with him tirelessly over the summer where he really pushed himself to sort of fill out social studies and really do that. He's been very active and really supportive of his students. He's resigned to seek to other opportunities, while you're certainly grateful for his service.
Thank you, Austin. Donations. Can anybody read those? Pat.
Jean Michaels donated twelve Silver Eagle dollars with twenty-eighteen Richard Reeves awards, two hundred and seventy-one dollar annual backpack for kids, fifty-five dollars for Bible Lutheran Church, fifteen hundred dollars for First English Lutheran Church, and a hundred and sixty-five dollars for Sacred Heart Collections.
Thank you, guys. Those donations are invaluable. And then we have a board ten, two thousand eighteen, or their meeting, five-ten board workshop, charity report, check register. Absent any further discussion, the board president calls for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah. Who made the motion?
Mr. Houston. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This concludes our regularly scheduled, well, our regular scheduled meeting. At this point, in consideration, we're going to adjourn into closed session, consideration of motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one C of the Wisconsin statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, specifically, specifically to discuss the possibility of employee layoffs and possible non-renewal of an employee. Yes, we need, there's a motion. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Brian Mahan?
Yes.
Kary Shesky, yes. Cody Prizdowski?
Yes.
Doug Houston?
Yes.
Brian Keating?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for your presence here this evening.
Go everybody out.
Are you the banner carrier?
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you for, thank you, Sarah.